Council meeting to order for October 27, 2018. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Mayor Riggle?
Here. Item two on the agenda is indication. Tonight will be led by Chaplain John Powers from Ohio Western University, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. You will all please stand.
I invite you to pray with me as you wish and as you are able. From this frail world, so walled about by roaring words and people's cause, we pause to ponder what it means that in our very midst, we've known the likes of such great saintly souls now passed from here, but linger still to fill our minds and hearts with hope. We cope with all the stressful chores of money, maintenance, and plans to make this town all it might be, but fail sometimes to stop and see the joy of this community that sits right here before our eyes, the power of care and compromise. Forgive us, God, our short insight that shadows us from what is light that shines right here throughout this room and lives and leadership that bloom in bounteous ways to bless our lives as neighbors, citizens, and friends, this caring bond that never ends. Shalom, shalom, shanti, shanti. Namaste. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much, Chaplain Powers. Item four on the agenda is the approval of a motion summary. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record. Would you like to do them separate? Madam Mayor? Would you like to do them separate? Sorry, he was talking to me again?
I'm sorry.
Yes, we'll do them separate. Approval of the motion summary, the regular meeting of council held on October 8, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Stay.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
An approval of the motion summary, the work session of council held on October 1, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. I move for approval. Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record. Item A, acceptance of the motion summary of the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting held on June 13, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary of the Sister City Advisory Board meeting held on July 10, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item C, acceptance of the motion summary of the Parking and Safety meeting held on August 20, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item D, acceptance of the motion summary of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting held on July 17, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item E, acceptance of the motion summary of the Planning Commission meeting held on September 5, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item F, resolution number 18-55, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigations for the Use of Volunteer and Employee Criminal History System and to execute successor agreements between the same parties with substantially similar conditions. Item G, resolution number 18-56, a resolution authorizing the installation of a no parking any time zone on the west and north sides of Glengarry Drive from 177 Glengarry Drive to 207 Glengarry Drive. Item H, established November 12, 2018, at 7:20 p.m. as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 18-91, an ordinance for Simon Kenton Council, Boy Scouts of America, for approval of a rezoning amendment for Camp Lazarus from A1 to A1 PMU encompassing approximately 231 acres and located at 4422 Columbus Pike, and for ordinance number 18-92, an ordinance for Simon Kenton Council, Boy Scouts of America, for approval of a conditional use permit for Camp Lazarus to allow the placement of a PMU to be established at 4422 Columbus Pike on approximately 231 acres. Item I, established November 12, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 18-94, an ordinance approving and development text amendment to ordinance number 08-113 for Stavroff Land Development for Belmont Place SubArea A for 102 single-family lots and five commercial outlots located north of Peach Bowl Road and east of Glen Parkway on approximately 49.6 acre Zone C3, R6, and A1 PMU. Item J, established November 12, 2018, at 7:45 p.m. as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 18-98, an ordinance for Tim Collet Truglio approving an alley vacation for River Street Business Park encompassing approximately 2.94 acres, 13 properties located at 45 River Street in Zone B3 and R4 PMU. And item K, established November 12, 2018, at 8 o'clock p.m. as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 18-99, an ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the Wesleyan Inn at 235 West Williams Street on approximately 0.72 acre Zone POI. Very good. What's your wish at council on the consent agenda? I move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six on the agenda is time set aside for letters, petitions, or any public comments that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone in the audience that would like to come forward this time? Do you have something that's on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll talk to you when we get there. It's not on the tonight's agenda. That's okay. So we'll do committee reports at this time then. Mr. Jones?
I have none, ma'am.
Mrs. Keller?
I have one, just a word from Parking and Safety about the, it's item, it's way down on our agenda, item 28, regarding a pretty important safety issue that's pressing around the Schultz School area. And I'm just wondering if there is time before any of the public hearings if we could move that item maybe forward on the agenda? Because the principal of Schultz is here, and I know he probably has to get up early to deal with the kids in the morning. So if there's an opportunity to move that a little bit sooner on the agenda, I'd just ask your indulgence on that. And we'll talk more about that when we get to it.
All right.
Thank you.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Mr. Browning?
Parks and Recreation is revisiting the smoking policy, and so we'll probably see that back at some point.
That's good. Mr. Rohr?
Nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. I was going to say something about Sister City, but that's our next thing on the agenda, so at this time we'll have a presentation, our annual report for Sister City Advisory Board. Rand Giebert, if you'd like to come forward at this time.
So my name is Rand Giebert. I'm at 265 Russell Fountain Avenue here in Delaware, and I'm the chair of the Sister City Advisory Board for you. And I've been making an annual report every year. And we had a clinic, a good year, I would say. We had some new advances in Lauerdane, Ireland. This is a new program that Colleen Rush and Julie Orvath, who are on our committee, have worked on. And we had a large group, about 50 students and teachers, go to Lauerdane last, this past spring and April. And we are looking forward to having another group of athletes going to Lauerdane this coming spring, in June of 2019. So we're excited about that. And we've had a big time with our German colleagues. It was great to go to Ballholder with Lisa and her mom. We had a good time there. And dedicated a museum to American servicemen and the history of Ballholders, so that was very good. And they came here to visit us. So I think we've established a much better relationship with Ballholders than we've had in the recent past. So that's a big step forward for us. We have a group coming of students again to Dempsey Middle School in a few weeks here. They've been doing this for 20 years, and it's formed the basis of an evolving Sister City relationship with Sakata. So that's developing in a good way. And we're going to have some art displays coming in the next year or two. We've been able to, we were hosted an evening with Luke Miller in January, and we hope to do a few more things like that as we have the opportunity. So I think the fact that Delaware is growing, it's, having a Sister City program is attractive probably for new residents, people maybe with some international background. And I want to thank you for your support of our committee. And Mayor Riggle, we're sorry you couldn't come to Ballholder with us, but she's the member of the city council on our board, and she's contributed a lot. I appreciate that. So I thank you for your support and hope to work with you in the year ahead. If you have any questions, you can ask me now. I'll hold some free for lunch if you want to learn more about our Sister City program. I'd be happy to talk to you about it. So any questions? Great, thank you.
And you're doing a great job. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. It's fun.
Okay, so let's move forward. Let's jump down to, what'd you say?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record. Resolution number 18-57, a resolution authorizing the extension of the school zone for Schultz Elementary School to include Rock Creek Drive, north and south of Willow Run Lane, the installation of school zone flashers on Rock Creek Drive and Applegate Lane, and the installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the crosswalk of Rock Creek Drive at Willow Run Lane. And ordinance number 18-103, an ordinance supplementing the 2018 appropriations ordinance to establish additional funding for the purchase of equipment to install school zone flashers around Schultz Elementary and rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the intersection of Rock Creek Drive and Willow Run and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason to promptly address the safety issue around Schultz Elementary, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage. Thank you. Mr. Freina?
Sure, I'll give you a brief summary. We were approached by both the neighborhood and the schools regarding specifically the intersection of Rock Creek and Willow Run. And you can see up here on the exhibit. Schultz Elementary was constructed about 20 years ago. At the time, Willow Run wasn't connected through. And through the more recent modifications to Schultz within the last five years, that connection was completed through there. And it was completed as more of a through road versus just, it was more of a parking lot before that. We've seen an increase in the use of that since that time. And the intersection specifically, it will run in Rock Creek. You have a confluence of a lot of pedestrian, children walking to school, and a lot of parent drop-off coming and going, as well as mixing with just the normal getting to work stream of traffic using Rock Creek as a collector road. So it was brought to our attention that there's some increasing concerns in terms of the safety. When we reviewed it, Schultz School is the only elementary we have that has no pedestrian warning system for school, school flashers. The other schools all have that. So those just didn't go in originally with this, when the Schultz School was first put in. And I think the utility of the school has certainly increased. Traffic has increased, the neighborhood around it's increased. So that's identified as a pretty important improvement there, specifically to the intersection of Rock Creek and Willow Run, too. We do see 85 percentile speeds up in the 29 to 30 mile per hour, which is indicative of, you see that in a lot of places. But this is a place, again, where you have a lot of school traffic, both for morning drop-off and afternoon pickup, plus the pedestrian traffic. So the addition of the rectangular rapid flashing signs is also recommended there that can be actuated by the pedestrians crossing the road. And actually, I think we talked about, the school would be willing to do some public education to their students and parents and to inform them how to use that. So really, in summary, we presented this and discussed this quite a bit in a recent Parking and Safety meeting. And the recommendation was to install the devices and to do it as quickly as possible. We did talk about, can we wait two months until 2019 appropriations budget is approved and start the project? And I think, and I won't put words in the council member's mouth, but it was, now this is too important because to wait, we could at least get a jump on it with, if we appropriate the funds this year to go ahead and get the equipment ordered and try to get some of those items in place sooner than later. So I know maybe the principal want to speak, and the council members want to speak. So if you have any specific questions on the equipment, I can answer those. But I'll just real briefly, back on Applegate Lane, you see a yellow dot at the intersection. And then on the two far dots on Rock Creek represent the school flashers, plus the butt-back flashers, looks very similar to what we have out there. We just finished. And then right at the intersection there, you'd see the rectangular rapid flashing beacons that the pedestrian actuated. Together, we're estimating just under $40,000 of improvements to put those things in. And this Public Works would, I'll be doing the majority of the work installation.
How long will it take you to get the equipment?
Yeah, we're trying to find out now. Some of it may be available within 30 to 45 days. We're trying to get a little better feel. These aren't like shelf items, they have to be constructed. So ideally, we'd like to be able to put an order in, assuming that we approve the funds, to at least get the order in place. And hopefully, within 60 days, we may be able to have, before, you know, school is, Christmas breaks over, we may be able to have those things in place. That would be our goal at least. So we're trying to find ways to expedite the equipment, looking at state purchasing contracts, alternate sources to go ahead and get these pieces of equipment so we can get them in soon.
Well, obviously, the safety of our children is the most important thing, and daylight savings time is around the corner, so it's going to get dark much quicker, so.
Yes.
Any other questions for Bill? Did you have any other comments, Lisa, since you brought it up earlier?
This is in my ward, and my own children go to Schultz Elementary. And I noticed an issue with this intersection myself. I had a near miss there once. Heard lots of stories about other parents who have had near misses. We heard from the principal of Schultz, who brought a family into our Parking and Safety Committee. Parents were with the child in that incident, and they had a near miss. So, you know, we don't want to lose any of our children on their way to school. This is a, just a, an issue in the entire area and everything that Bill said with the, you know, the way that the neighborhood is crept up around the school. We need these beacons, and I appreciate staff being able to move as quickly on this and just ask for council support. The principal's here, if you'd like to add anything.
Anybody else from council? You'd like to come forward? And if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please. Why don't you sit down on the microphone?
Travis Woodward, Finals Six, Apple Valley Circle, Golden Hill City Schools, Principal Schultz Elementary. Thank you very much for allowing us to bring this here. I've been the principal of Schultz for, this is my fifth year. And I can tell you that probably every year we have had a near miss. Unfortunately, we've tried to avoid this pattern. It's often we work with us, we have some minimum staff, just because the increased traffic, I pick up and drop off within our school. We have roughly 700 students. I'd say between 200 and 300 that are getting dropped off walking somewhere other than bussing to the school. While it's not everybody coming through this area, it's the one intersection that we don't have, I think, the safest piece as far as anybody crossing there. It's not as visible, you don't have the lights, the flashers. And it's been the one place that I've always felt the concerns from families. Every year's been something similar, it happened this year. And it was close parents, there were three families that were bussing at that time. And they had, the couple of moms that were hit had actually gotten off their bikes, were walking their bikes across to be safe. And it was another person who was picking up children around the corner to the north. They were saying not paying attention as they were driving through. So somebody that's aware of, had that connection to the school, and that should have known better, but did not. But still were aware that we had that near miss just because visibility while you're driving is not as clear as it could be. And I think that's why we discussed at the previous meeting. It's not necessarily a case of if something happened, but when. And that's our biggest concern. I, since I've been there, we've increased staff in the parking lot alone with your safety from about four to nine. We've done that in order to provide that safety piece. I've gone down to that intersection myself as much as possible, but I just, I don't have the manpower right now to make sure that I can do it daily. And I think, again, the biggest piece that we're grateful that the studies have taken place, I know with the law enforcement study last year, we extended some part of the parking zones to make sure the visibility is increased, but we still have those concerns that something could happen. So anything that we're able to make happen there for our student safety on our end, we definitely have plans in place for how we would teach the utilization of that crossing component. But again, it's just, it's definitely something that is a real concern. And we've had near misses, I think we've been lucky. And we're just looking for anything we can do to ensure that that should ever stay crossing.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. I make a motion to approve resolution 18-57.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move for, let me see here. Third ordinance, 18-103. We have an emergency clause.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just noticed, too, that section four has the emergency clause language, but the emergency clause doesn't actually show before the voter suppression. Darren, do we have to modify?
Do you want the emergency clause? You do?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to have to amend that, is it in the title? You're, the thing is just to calculate, talk about that thing when I look at it.
It just doesn't have where I write the votes.
Oh, that's okay.
I can just read.
Okay. It has the emergency clause line, which just doesn't have the votes on it. Yeah, you'll just write the votes on it, that's not important.
Okay, so I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 18-103.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move to enact the emergency clause on ordinance 18-103.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance 18-103.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion?
Just real quickly, and I know this is, makes a lot of sense. I just want to point out that we have made a request to the schools to help pick up the half of the cost of the project, which I think it should have been included as part of the overall traffic reconfiguration when they did it. I called the superintendent on Friday or Thursday and asked him about that. He'll let me know. It's not contingent on that, I just want to let you know. I think it's fair that they, if they can, support half of the cost of the project that they would. So that's approximately $20,000.
Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion passes, you okay?
Yep.
While she's catching a breath, I do want to apologize. I thought you were saying it wasn't in the title, and it is. So I confirm it's the word. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, at this time, it's 7:30, so let's do item 10, which is a 7:30 public hearing and third reading of ordinance 18-89. Ordinance number 18-89, an ordinance amending section 917.14 of the Sanitary Sewer Regulations of the Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code to add a 50% surcharge for non-city customers. Darren or Blake?
Yep.
Who wants this one?
Madam Mayor, members of council, up for consideration. This is a usage-based surcharge, so it is only affecting the monthly bills. You know, the sewer rate is based on how much water is consumed. So this is, this is 100% usage-based. I just want to make sure that's in everybody's minds as we go into this public hearing, so.
To provide some context, Madam Mayor, members of council, we currently have an ordinance that mirrors this for water service. And we've typically required annexation to get sewer service with some very limited exceptions. This would allow a little bit more flexibility to treat sewer the same as water and give us the opportunity to provide service to sewers without require, non-city residents without requiring the annexation.
Sorry, how do I computer, let me get some picture. Any questions?
I thought I was like saying something really dramatic.
Any questions for Darren or Blake? This is a third reading, what is the wish at council? Oh, well, so let's do a public hearing on this. Anybody here from the public that would like to come forward at this time?
Good evening. Kevin Hennessy, 716 Kerr Road, also Delaware Township Trustee. I come before you tonight to express my opposition to this request for surcharge adjacent, for a case of township residents. I can envision how a city department could easily rationalize this idea, but I believe the role of council to take into consideration all the things that are going on in the community and not just look at one particular item. I think a strong case can be made to support the policy of equal fees for township residents under the community cooperation and vision that I look for at the city council to bring to this matter. There are many benefits to this approach. Environmental benefits are just beginning, you just could look to. Communities that have systems, we all live down the street. Better water quality for everyone is a good idea. We all live down the street. Um, better water quality for everyone is a good idea. And to, um, to penalize someone for moving from a septic system to, um, a city system because they don't live in the city, it doesn't show the vision that we keep here. Um, as a community, we share a lot of things inside of the community, not just inside the city and township. Um, many of us, like, all attend Delaware City Schools. They bound, bound between city and township. Uh, churches, parks, uh, our township has a park down on Liberty Road that's utilized by many city residents. There's no sign there that says, if you're a city resident, please pay more. Um, mutually aid and cooperation, um, it's not a one-way street. Um, you're all familiar with the tri- township fire department benefit for the city. And I think you're all familiar with the amount of usage that occurs on both sides of that equation and the city benefits from that relationship. And that's paid for fully by township residents. There are no city funds that fund township try, township fire department. Um, in municipal court, um, a few years ago, I had the pleasure of sitting on municipal court, residing over a case that was in the city by city residents in the city business, uh, brought to the court by city police department. But I'm not a city resident, but yet I was allowed to be on a jury and serve the community, um, because that's the right to do there. Um, we have county fairs, fireworks displays in the township that, uh, in the city that controls the township where the, the township gets involved and expands funds and cooperates with the city. Um, farmers markets where lots of different people are involved. More recently, the Ironman competition, which takes place on township roads. And they're closed down for the benefit of the community, which is mainly the city. The township really isn't partaking in the Ironman or not benefiting from any permanent business. But, but yet we close down some of our roads and cooperate. Um, roads are a great example. Um, I could look at, uh, Broadmiller and Pollock Road, where Tara Alta, you'll be talking about later tonight. Um, no one's getting out of Tara Alta without going across a township road. A very large number of township roads, Paul, Paul, Broadmiller and Pollock, that are retained by the township. There's no way to get in and out of that subdivision without going across township property. The city can't service that without township roads that are currently in place. So, township residents are paying for those roads, but yet where we have maybe twenty or thirty residents living on Pollock and Broadmiller, there'll now be more than four hundred city residents traversing out of their neighborhood across township roads to access whatever sewers they want. If we don't stop there, go, hey, we want to toll booth because you're not a township resident, you should pay more. It's not the approach that we take. It's cooperative, it's beneficial, it's communal. Um, consistency in fees. There are a lot of things that I take part of here in the city that I don't get charged an extra fee for. So, I'm parking downtown, I don't see something on the meter that says if you're a city resident or township resident. So, you know, it seems somewhat selective here to look at this one item. Um, I've heard reference to the Waterville. Uh, Waterville is a different view in my world because we have dealt with water and the communities in the township. And that's different where they have wells. And that's different than the agreements in place between the city and the county on sewage. The city is prohibited through that agreement to come into the township and offer sewage services to township residents. And that benefits the city at the expense of the township. And so now when a township resident might need access to city sewage, to say you should pay more, even though we've excluded competition by agreement with the county that says they will come in and service that area, seems unbalanced and unfair. Um, so there's lots of cooperation that goes on there. We have all the issues that revolve around this. As I read through the ordinance, I also saw something very interesting. It was made reference in the ordinance to about income taxes, which I found very interesting. Because it kind of tries to distinguish what's a resident and why one would pay more or less for this particular service to be the potential need of income tax. Many township residents pay your income tax. They work in the city and then they depart the city and go to their home residence in the adjacent township. So, they're already paying income tax. Yet, you're gonna ask them to pay more. Meanwhile, your tax program, as is stated on your website, has many exclusions for residents living in your city that may not pay income tax for various reasons. Military residents now, people on limited incomes or catch a retirement funding, don't qualify for income tax. Yet, they live in the city and they'll take advantage of the city sewer. So, the income tax one seems kind of strange to me because it's not consistent that if you are working in the city and you're paying income tax, you're now still gonna be charged more. But yet, if you're living in the city and not paying income tax, there's no additional fee. So, it just seems somewhat inconsistent in that manner. But more importantly, there's a process going on in development and growth in this community that involves townships and the city and the county. And one of those is around sewer. It's a very complex matter and it's a very ma, matter built around efficiencies to service the community. And the arena's in place for certain boundaries. Putting in a policy like this for, you know, isolating certain parts of the community and saying you should pay more would be grounds for looking at that community to say, look, to the county and to the city, you can't have a mutual agreement like that because that's not fair. It's not fair to the county residents who aren't in the city who are being charged more for being excluded county services. So, in the future, if you want to expand that, which also, by the way, says you're supposed to offer some services to city residents or township residents as part of that agreement. I'm not sure if that was in print or not. It's in the agreement. And there's no statement there about four additional charges. So, I think, you know, when you look at it from a fairness perspective, one department might say, hey, we could charge more for this. And hey, why not? You're not part of the city. But when you look at the larger expenditures of township governments and city governments and county governments and look at all the ways in which we cooperate, this one seems very selective in choosing not to cooperate and not share services. We're not asking to, to open up development to townships or event that community in the city. That's not what this is about. This is about existing residents, maybe needing access to services that's ongoing in the future. And I know for my own benefit, if one of my neighbors is having problems with their septic system, I wish they would get it fixed quickly. And if that solution is to connect to the city sewer, we shouldn't put hurdles in their way and make it costly for them to do that. Because we all benefit from that. Because all of this runs downhill. It all runs to the old tangent. Many townships live north of the city. You pull your water from the old tangent. Why wouldn't we want to make sure that everyone had access to this service? Not saying do it for free, not saying do it without tax fees or other attachment fees or one-time service charges to make it happen. That's reasonable, like you would have a developer. But then saying from here on out, because intentional, possibly, whatever the reasons, we're gonna charge a fifty percent more. I don't think that's really consistent with all the other things we're asking all these intergovernmental agencies to do. And I would request the council to consider that when thinking about this. It's not just a simple, yeah, let's charge more. Because when you do that, then as I can tell you, as my role as a township trustee, if my residents come to me and say, hey, why are we closing down Berlin Station, Pollock, Kingsbury for an event that's going on in the city, when they charge us more for services that they offer their residents? Good question. Do we charge the city a fee for shutting down those roads to come run in our neighborhoods and shut down any communities, many of our citizens? Um, you say, it's good for the community. When you have your fireworks down on the south side of town, you ask us to deal with our roads and parking permits. We agree to it. We don't say, and by the way, there's a fee. So, you also come and wanted to tear up our road, Pollock Road. I think you're familiar with what you've done on the Pollock Road down there to write a sewer line. And you poured a bunch of concrete into our road, the township road. And it's been like that all summer. And we've asked nicely, you guys get around to get that paid, right? We didn't say, oh, there's a fee for tearing up our road, any communities, our citizens, right? So, we want to cooperate together. This seems very selective to say today, for this thing only, we're gonna charge you fifty percent more. So, with that in mind, I would ask council to consider this proposal and consider turning it down. I understand why the sewer department might think it's a great idea to add a little bit more to their budget. But you're gonna create a situation where it's us and them. And there's no need to do that. We, we cooperate enough together already for the benefit of all our citizens, community. The fact that we have certain governmental boundaries, and you've gotten the benefit of a county agreement that says we cannot compete with sewer against the city. We either have to stick to septic or buy into the city. And if we have to at some point annex for large developments, it's all covered. So, if we have single-family homes and need to access this that are existing today, this seems very punitive to do that. I would ask council to vote it back. Thank you.
Jim.
Tim Long, uh, nine seventy-nine North High Street in Arlington.
Then hello, Emma Keller with Cross Brown Card at nineteen seventy-seven Wyandotte Road in Columbus, Ohio. The mayor and councilor. Mr. Schon, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here tonight.
Yes, so we want to add a few comments to, uh, to that. Uh, we, we pretty much agree with the last comments as well. But, uh, I'm with Long EDA, uh, an economic development firm.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to it?
With the Long EDA and, um, and been in public hands for forty years. And we represent the Urban Light, uh, Home Loans Association, which is a hundred and two residents. And I know this issue has been around for, uh, ten or fifteen years. We've been involved for maybe about six or, you know, six or seven months. So, um, we don't really, and so we might not know all the issues, but, but we want to speak on behalf of, of over a hundred residents. Um, quick background, the subdivisions that were established was established in eighteen ninety-seven in Delaware Township. Um, there's a hundred and three homes and fifteen, uh, undeveloped lots. The developer controlled sewer plant and rented, um, and get, and goods, uh, mismatched when they were ordered by the EPA. Uh, they're currently, uh, involved in plants that they allow EPA. Um, uh, but the board is considering all options, including continuing to operate the plant, uh, to work with the county and, uh, connecting their, their system if possible, or having them run the plant, uh, or of course, a connection to cities, uh, sewer, which is overall, probably, that solution. Um, but we wanted to share a few thoughts, one of which, you know, we appreciate that, that the city's willing to consider, um, allowing them to get access to the city sewer. Um, and, um, but the residents are not looking for a free lunch. They know that they have to pay the cost and they're willing to pay those costs through a special assessment, which would be, you know, tax lien on their property. Um, but we wanted you to understand the difference here, um, is that these are existing homes. They don't have the luxury of, of like a, a new homeowner of just putting these tax fees into their mortgage and, and paying it off over thirty years. Uh, they already, you know, paid this for this system. Now they're being asked to pay, you know, towards a million and three more to connect to the city sewer. Uh, and then on top of that, the fifth year's in third charge. Um, so we just wanted to put some numbers to this. Um, that million and three fifty is, would be charged by about fifty-three hundred dollar capacity fee, thirty-two hundred dollar, uh, island sewer charge, a thousand dollar maintenance fee, and then about two hundred and thirty-six thousand construction cost, um, which is about twelve thousand dollars a home. And there was talk about doing this over ten years, you know, paying back over ten years for the assessment, either by the city or county, um, at a rate of seven percent, uh, which is, uh, which is, which would really put a burden on many of the homeowners. That would be about, um, seventeen hundred dollars a year versus as low as eight hundred and forty dollars if it was in the, over twenty years at lower rate. So, we're, we, our requests are simply to consider reducing some of these fees, eliminating surcharge, uh, extending the assessments, like in cooperation with the county, the, uh, twenty years. Um, and, um, so that was, yeah, yeah, I, I thank you to have Emma Keller here. Um, but what I think the point we're trying to make is on top of all the costs to do the connection. And I know there was been discussions in accordance, been down the road, and there was potential agreement before, but with the addition of all those costs and then the surcharge, it's just a, a burden that, um, these residents, um, it's going to cost them financially and cost them rethink what they're gonna be able to do. And, and we've been in touch with many of the residents and, uh, you know, there needs to be over seventy-five percent approval to take any action. And, uh, it, it seems clear from what I have seen at some meetings, that, that, that these level of cost, that, right or wrong, uh, that won't be achieved. So, we're happy to answer any questions or...
Um, Madam Mayor, it may be helpful, I have some information on that agreement referenced by the prior speaker, but I, I did ask Blake to, just get an estimate on what the scope of surcharge we're talking on here, because I, I kind of get the sense that people think it's like another million dollars or something. But Blake, can you tell us like what the average bill for sewer would be then, so we can estimate what a surcharge on top of that would be?
Sure. Conservally, conservatively speaking, your, your average bill is probably gonna be in the forty dollar range monthly for sewer, just the sewer portion, because then you've got your water, your refuse, and your storm also in that bill. So, forty, add an, you know, so the surcharge would add twenty. So, you're talking twenty, twenty dollars a month.
Okay.
Uh, one, one more thing, this is more related to the prior speaker. I do have that agreement, I think that he was referencing, which talked about, you mentioned the monopoly that, uh, the city might have with sewer. Um, that, there is an agreement that kind of divvied up what the city can take care of and what the county can take care of. However, uh, it does have an out clause. So, the area can be serviced by the county if agreed to by the parties in writing. Uh, in particular with this, uh, Riverby situation, we did offer to, um, allow the county to service that, um, since we were having issues getting it worked out. I don't think the county is, is interested or able to do it based on the geography of where their sewer lines are. But we were willing to allow the county to service that area. They, they just haven't been able to do that. Is that fair, Blake?
Yes. And, and the, the boundary agreements, both water and sewer, they, they very closely mirror each other. And they are more or less a first right of refusal type of agreement. I mean, it, it's not saying we're the only one who can serve you. If we're not near there, we don't serve. It's, it, it's not a monopoly.
And then one, one final thing regarding the annexation in that agreement. Uh, there are some existing houses that are sort of grandfathered and not having to annex to get sewer. However, that, and that grandfather only lasts until the property is, uh, sold or transferred. So, eventually, they all would have to annex under the existing agreement. I mean, we have to enforce that part, but they would be grandfathered until they sell and they become contiguous.
So, the, the points that Mr. Hennessy makes, trustee Hennessy, are valid. I think this underscores a larger issue that we have regarding how we provide utility services and what historically we have done and what we're doing today. Typically, it's required that you annex into the city to get sewer and water services. And for those portions of the city where we provide water service, Hills Miller Road, Parks of Cougar Road, Green Lawn Avenue, all over the city, um, those areas did not annex and therefore they paid a, a surcharge. It's a premium that they get charged because other, other, uh, areas of the city have had to annex in to get that sewer service. So, that was the reasoning behind it. I think there's valid points about the cooperation between the city and the township with a whole host of things. The other issue with respect to Riverby and not, nothing to do with the surcharge, is that the city is on record twenty-five years ago of opposing the permit that was pending before the EPA to grant this project. We opposed it because it was in our three-mile planning area and we felt it made more sense to be served by the city, to provide a more uniform distribution of services, more orderly planning of the growth and development of the city. Uh, Mr. Adrian, at the time, elected not to do that, uh, and went, uh, to the EPA directly and received permission to reactivate a plant that was built back in seventy-eight. That plant was there. It predates Riverby. Um, and it was in place, reactivated it, and that became the source of their, their sewer supply for years. And it worked fine until a few years ago when they started getting orders that the plant was gonna not function properly, started into negotiations with the city, and here we are today. I mean, I, I, I understand the, the, the issue of, of equity, but the bigger issue for council is if you, we have to be careful because, and I, obviously, we're not gonna make the decision tonight, but this is part of a larger question of how we provide utility services for residents for areas outside the city. And how do you want to do that? And then there's the issue just of the agreement with Riverby, which is kind of separate, which is what you guys are working on. Extend the life of the agreement, make it twenty years as opposed to ten years and that type of thing, which we can, we can, uh, discuss. But, um, this is not an easy one, but I can't tell you that former mayor Mike Shay, and I think he's mentioned it to you, we're on record as saying we didn't, and it was kind of, I don't know if they were thinking twenty-five years ago that this was gonna happen today in two thousand and eighteen, but this is one of the reasons that we were concerned about it at the time, was because we would be faced at some point, because it wasn't only the, the sewer service, but the, the other request of the township from Riverby is to take over the roads as well, because the roads haven't been properly maintained. So, that, that now will burden the township. So, I'm, I can hear what Mr. Hennessy is saying. I think there's a lot of validity to it, but I think we have to consider this in the context of how we're providing, we have a number of customers right now who were, who are not in the city, who elected not to be in the city for one reason or another. This is a little bit different, obviously, because it's in a pre-existing large development. It's a subdivision versus, you know, four homes that are on a, on a particular road where we might run a water or sewer line. But anyway, I just wanted to-
How many places do we have that are sewer only right now? I know Hills Miller's water only.
Very rare.
I believe there's seven total right now.
Seven double houses?
Yes.
Yeah. It's mostly there, the, it's water.
Yes, my thought, yeah.
It's mostly water. And it's, this is an unusual one, because it's, it's an existing subdivision. It's not just three or four people where there was a water line around. That's this case for Hills Miller Road. They, and that, you know, and other areas where we provide the sewer, um, or water.
Yeah. I had this one other comment, uh, measure of this side here, but the agreement between the city and the county, as I read it, uh, it does require annexation for existing homes.
It was carved out. This was carved out for that reason, just given it's, because we were concerned with bringing it into the city. It wasn't like bringing in three or four homes. This is a hundred and twenty homes with an existing infrastructure system, which is pretty aged, is aging. And our concern was burdening the city with that. So-
Well, the, the roads aren't good for our fire trucks. We just-
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a difficult situation.
It is. And we certainly appreciate those comments and the history. And what we're trying to do here is help these folks get a solution. And I know the city's been working with it before. And so, we appreciate it. We just, with all the costs-
Sure.
Including the surcharge, it just becomes something that, uh, these residents are hoping that they're gonna be considering.
And I should point out, it's in our capital budget. It was in our capital budget last year. It's in our capital budget this year to do this work. This is, it's just a matter of, we had, we thought we had an agreement, then the association changed, and as a result of that, folks were, a new team was hired, which is fine. We haven't really had a chance to get up to speed. And then, obviously, we have this, this piece that's be, before us tonight, which is separate but related.
You know, I was coming about the, the surcharge. I, I agree that all things equal is not a, a huge, huge number. But I can only imagine if you were proposing to increase your sewer rates to city residents by fifty percent, we'd need to be here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to come forward on this subject? All right.
Absolutely.
I understand all the things that have been brought up here tonight. And obviously, the immediate impact of this is gonna be on the Riverby subdivision. But this is really a bigger issue. This is a public policy decision about how we provide our, to people who aren't residents in the city. So, I think we have to look beyond the immediate situation here to what is the right technical thing to do for a public policy state. Uh, as far as the agreement and how this gets financed, I think we should do everything we can to make this as, as least harmful to the, to the residents that are responsible. But that, to me, is a separate- to me, is a separate issue from this.
Yeah, I don't know if council's been updated on the intricacy of the situation. What we had kind of in place before the Riverby board change was that the county would do the project, so they can do their power to assess, because we can't assess someone who's not in the city. So they would in name run the project, but the city would front all the money and do all the work, and then we would do an MOU with the county, where when the property taxes came through with the assessment, they would then pay us that. So that's kind of the mechanics of how we thought it could work, so it wouldn't be a huge upfront, just pay the, whatever it's ten thousand dollars upfront.
And I have a meeting with the county administrator later this week, Friday, and this is one of the items on the agenda, to discuss this, and the county's role on this project.
Seven percent sounds high. When we did our sidewalks, it was two or three percent, wasn't it?
Seven percent.
Was it seven?
It's been seven for probably better quality.
Seems like we should go to a fourth review.
Yeah, I would say we need some, yeah, we need to report back, just get your general thoughts, but then some bigger.
I guess I have just a few more questions about, so in the Riverby subdivision, I just need my memory refreshed here. The, they had their own sewer system, it failed. They don't want to annex in the city, or they do?
I think part of the problem when you.
Or we don't want them to annex.
When you annex, most of our annexations are developer, and so he's, he or she is the owner of a huge piece of property, so they can fill out paperwork and be the hundred percent unanimous of the petition of the landowners to sign, because they own everything. It's difficult when you have lots of landowners, because it's a different process, and you need more signatures and agreement, and some people don't want to annex, and some people might want to annex, and then you have to be contiguous, so if the people in the front aren't taking part, so it's just, it's not impossible, but it's a much more logistical challenge when you have existing homes.
At the time, and again, this goes back a number of years, at the time that annexation has been brought up, there has not been an interest in annexation, principally because there's an income tax, and not all of the residents of Riverby work in the city. Some work other places, and there's no income tax levied on them. But the times it's been brought up, there's been that issue, and then there's been the staff issue of this is not a typical annexation of raw land, it's an annexation of a development that's over twenty-five years old, that has legacy costs associated with it, and what do you do? One of the legacy costs we're dealing with right now is the plant, but there's also roads, there's drainage, and there's, you know, a whole host of things. But when it has been brought up, Councilwoman, there's not been an interest on the, on Riverby's part, it was kind of a mutual, well, you don't really want it to be annexed, and we're not really sure we want to annex.
So then I guess I'm just trying to figure out, if we say yes, Riverby, come in, use our sewer, pay the same amount that city residents, why wouldn't everyone who surrounds the city of Delaware say, I'd like to tap into the city of Delaware sewer and pay no additional fee? I mean, like, where would that potentially end?
That's part of the larger.
So, I mean, we're not trying to be unneighborly necessarily, just trying to control our own sewer capacity and say, this is kind of a protective measure to keep everyone from, I mean, we have a really unique circumstance here. I mean, what would the alternative be if they said, no, we don't want to pay your fifty percent or surcharge, could they fix the plant themselves?
I think that's possibly an option, I think they alluded to it, Mr. Long and Mr. Kelly alluded to that, but I think that had been looked at. At one point, they had an engineer that came in, came up with the cost, I mean, they really have to weigh the cost of restarting that plant, having it run, versus the economy of, you know, tying into a public sewer, I mean, the sewer system is literally in the front yard, and it was sized in such a way and built in such a way to accommodate, to accommodate this. So the way it was put in, the depth that was put in, but, so, it's, it's kind of a dilemma here, it really is, it's not an easy, and.
Okay, one easy answer, that is a dilemma, City Mayor Holmes is correct, but to answer your question, if someone said, I don't want to pay the fifty percent surcharge, they could sign up annexation agreement, and, I mean, that avoids the surcharge. In this case, you have to be contiguous, but.
And this property is not contiguous now, but there's a property immediately to the south that is owned by Preservation Parks, and Preservation Parks is talking to the city about sewer service, and Preservation Parks is contiguous to Terra Alta.
Blake, what was the process of establishing the fifty percent amount? What was the thought behind that?
It is a very standard number for the practice. There's a reason why the water was set at fifty percent, how many years ago?
Long.
Long, long years ago. And I've asked many consultants in all the neighboring communities that they advise on all have similar, if they have a surcharge, it is fifty percent as well, and I think you guys are hitting on the right topics. This, this is more a stance of the city to decide on, this isn't something really proposed by utilities department, this doesn't do me anything, this doesn't inflate my budget anything at all, it won't affect me. But this is a, this is a decision on how we, how we protect the growth of the city, how do we ensure that, you know, the one thing that grows a city, the public utilities, how do we ensure that that continues to grow the city? That's all this is.
Can you come back forward to the microphone? Just your name, so if anybody's listening, they know, you don't have to go to your address again.
So a couple of topics that brought up. So first, staff might want to review your EPA application for when you grew the sewer plant. I think there's some clause in there about the Riverby plant being taken offline as part of your application. I'm not a Riverby expert, I just want to talk more generally to that, but I've been around for thirty-three years, so I understand some of the history here. As far as who could come in and just jump into the city from a development perspective, most of the townships have very rigid, on plan zoning, you can't just do that. You can't just come into the township and build a very large subdivision, and then turn around and ask the city to service. It would require something to the line of pure knock, which would require the developer to put in a plant system at very great expense and EPA regulations before they could occupy any of those structures, at which time, then if they chose, I guess they could apply. But that's, Riverby exists, so it's not like a developer to come in tomorrow and come into the township and say, I want to go high density and build roads and start occupying houses, and then once the houses are occupied, turn around and say, I want to open the city's sewer. They would need to put in the sewer system before those houses could be occupied. So it's kind of a chicken and egg problem. They can't build out subdivision and then ask to come in, it just can't be done. So zoning today prevents that in the city of Delaware Township, I'm sure it's in all townships, the county offices with our zoning. The agreement between the county and the city is binding as an agreement, but I'm not a lawyer. It also requires you both are part of a sewer district, correct? And not anyone can be in a sewer district, and once you have a sewer district defined, anyone else trying to come into that district requires your permission to do that. Not saying you wouldn't give it, but that's pretty monopolistic. Township just can't on its own decide who wants to get the services. I would have to come to the city council and argue that I need to do it and grant your permission. That sounds monopolistic to me, okay? That the county rules, you can call Mike from, or Jeffy, or whoever you want, they're not going to bring sewer to us. They've already decided they have an agreement in place with the city, it makes sense. City service is us, the county service is who they do, and I think at some day they can draw out thirty-six, thirty-seven, which is developed, and out thirty-six, thirty-seven, which the suburb is going to continue, you're going to run into the city county sewer. I don't know what you're planning on doing, but I expect at some point, city residents might be attached to the county sewer system. So you're setting a precedent that would say the county should charge your state residents fifty percent more, even though they're county residents. Right? Because now they're going to be on a county sewer system. So I, you know, again, we can live with the past, we can live with everything we've done in the past and say, oh, that's the way we've always done it, this, that, the other, and we can continue to be at loggerheads. We can continue looking for opportunities to not cooperate. You said, it's not going to make a big difference in the sewer budget, I mean, that's a multi-million dollar capital budget, it's going to be a difference. But to the residents who exist already, you can see why they're going to feel like they're being taken advantage in the township. I think it's a reasonable thing, I understand you have students like I do, and you have to explain to them why, I hope I gave you some reasons. They take advantage of a lot of other facilities where they're not paying the taxes, but they benefit. You know, Curran Road, Burden Station, Pollock Road, we'll talk about this some more, those are township roads, we're going to dump four hundred thousand dollars into Burden's, or Blomwood Road next year, to refurbish it, or the altar subdivision, there are lots there. They're going to have the pristine road to drive on when that division opens up, that's coming off the township dollars. We worked together, we don't need to be at each other's loggerheads trying to see who can score one more. That's all I'm really asking for here, is just cooperation, mutual agreement, we're helping each other out. I can't redraw out history, I can't redraw out township boundaries and city boundaries and decisions by developers and landowners, it is what it is. But just charging fifty percent of mortgage you can, or just because they're not in the city, doesn't seem to be really a reasonable thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the public? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, and.
Got some work to do.
Yeah, got some more work to do on and more discussion.
Yeah.
This will go to another reading. Okay, let's move back up to item nine, which is the second reading of ordinance number eighteen dash ninety. May I, if you'll please, read this under the record?
Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety, an ordinance finding that the creation of the Terra Alta Community Authority will be conducive to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare, and is intended to result in the development of a new community, declaring that authority to be organized in a body politic incorporated, defining the boundary of that authority's new community district, providing the method of appointing members to that authority's Board of Trustees, and fixing the surety for those trustees' bonds.
Thank you. Darren or Tom, who wants to start?
Just pick up where we left off at the last meeting, we just need some direction from council on this. You have my, my thoughts about it regarding the millage amount being for last, just because of the charge. I know there was some question by council about the length of the charge, and if it's at a higher amount, it will pay down sooner, that's, that's true. Just be aware that if the subdivision does not have the same, the absorption that they're projecting over the next ten years, that the folks there could be, you know, they'll be facing a higher, higher millage rate arguably for a longer period of time. But anyway, that's ultimately, it's council's call. Regarding procedure, I was just going to have Darren just review that for you, so we can, we had some communication with Greg Daniels, who's assisting us on this, and can, it basically is what we've said before, petition has to be mutual agreement in terms of amending it. Darren, if you want to.
Sure, and then I'll follow up with something else as well. So, process-wise, you know, as we mentioned before, the only legislation we have power over is the accepting or denying the NCA. So to any change regarding the underlying components of the NCA, they have, we have to essentially reach an agreement, because the petitioner is going to have to amend the petition, submit a new petition, amended petition to council, council has to vote to accept that amended petition, and then they can vote to approve that. So we don't really have the ability to say, oh, well, we like five, six, or seven, we have to have the developer propose that new number. Echoing what Tom said, we need some guidance from council to aid in that getting that final number in there. The number's probably the easier part of it. Second part of it is the, there was a discussion as to how long this would go, and that's going to require drafting a sentence or two, which won't be hard, but are you going to do it until a certain amount of money is collected? Are you going to do it for a certain period of time? That's some guidance that would be helpful in terms of crafting, that language is quick to turn it around and help Tom negotiate, because you could say, well, we'll put it in place for ten years, whatever you collect, up to this amount, whichever sooner. You could say you'll put it in place for just until this amount is collected, and you can, you could say you'll put it in place forever, which is the way it's written right now. So we can write anything, but it'd be helpful to have some sort of idea of council's thinking, so we could get that put in the petition if the developers inclined to do so.
Darren, I was asking, well, you just said, you said right now, it's really, it can go on forever, but from my understanding, last time when the developers presented, that once this debt, whatever that figure is, is paid off, then it reverts, first of all, two things happen, that the owners now become, take charge of the NCA, and that, they can do whatever they want, but I mean, at that point, it drops off because that debt, whatever that figure is, is going to pay off.
It would not drop off, they weren't, your first sentence was a hundred percent right, your second sentence is a maybe. So after the debt is paid off, they would turn over the NCA to the, either HOA or the elected people from the NCA, and then it's still on there, but you were correct in saying, now they could vote to say, we want to end it. They could vote to say, we'll just leave it on and buy another, make another swimming pool or whatever, but it doesn't automatically, I think that was, just maybe misspeaking, it doesn't roll off when it's done, it just turns over to the owners themselves, who can then decide what they want to do with it. So it could end, or it could stay on.
David Fisher did, I forgot to add, called earlier today to say they're working on some updated numbers as from the last city council meeting about what they would recommend. I think there was some concern about council, on council's part, about paying for things that had already been accomplished. And so I don't have those numbers, but again, we just need to know what council's overall thought is on this, and we can, I think.
Well, it would have been helpful to have those numbers.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to decide, but.
Yeah.
It's, I still feel, well, last time, the higher millage is better in the long run, provided it pays off the debt earlier, provided that when they get the higher mills, they don't raise the bar on what they're going to spend, you see what I'm saying? So I think if I'm a homeowner and I can pay off my mortgage in fifteen years versus thirty, that's what I'd like to do. But we want to make sure that whatever figure is agreed upon, it's what's going to be paid off by this, that it doesn't, doesn't go up from there.
Right.
And there is a downside to the first residents, it's going to prevent it because they're going to be paying longer, as the subdivision builds out, you know, it's better.
Yeah, they're looking at about eighty-five homes a year, which could be, who knows? Nobody has a crystal ball to know that if there's a downturn, it could be less if his.
Well, and I think we have flexibility, I don't know how much flexibility, but I mean, we could put a timeframe on each house, so the first one rolls off, the new one, I mean, we, I don't know how to do it, but we could, there's lots of different ways to, I think Tom's, Tom's fear is that you build the first hundred houses, and then the economy goes bad, and those hundred houses are going to pay the seven point five forever, and whereas if it's the lower number, it just takes them longer to get paid back as opposed to the homeowners, which, there's no legal problem with either one, it's just whether you want to have those people be paying that charge for a long time.
I just remember, did we start at ten or nine, or did they start at ten or nine and a half?
They, I think there was an initial conversation before I got involved at ten, but it's been seven and a half ever since they submitted it.
And then they submitted five and a half, is what they said, they could, they'd find acceptable, and they listed a number of those different.
They did, or you did?
No, they did.
They did.
They did, and then we reviewed that, but they gave, you know, they provided some correspondence that's in your packet somewhere of it, five and a half. So again, it's, it's a big step for the, you know, it's a big step.
Yeah, I would contend that this is much to do about nothing, myself. From a standpoint of the, I understand the developer wants an NCA, but if the developer goes ahead and performs their development as a conventional development, not utilizing an NCA, they can, they burden themselves with those costs, which is part of doing their business, but then they also recoup those monies through, you know, through the sale of their development units. When you look at, and they threw out a couple different numbers, they threw out an average price of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a house, a unit, and they threw out four hundred thousand dollars a house, a unit, a unit. And keeping at what they requested, which was seven and a half millage, on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, that's, what is that, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents per unit. At buildout, when, if they build out all eight hundred and seventy-two units, and they get all those built out, the year after that, they would be bringing in four point four million dollars. If they, if they continued that for thirty years, because we don't know how long they want to do it, if they continued it for thirty years, that would come out to nineteen point six million dollars. When we looked back at what Mr. Fisher gave us in one of those earlier emails, he came out with four point six million dollars of development costs. So there's a big difference between four point six million and nine million and, you know, any other number you come up with. And obviously, if you use that higher. And obviously, if you use that higher unit cost of 400,000, that also incrementally goes up. So, there's, there's some significant monies at play here that I'm very uncomfortable with, and I don't think we, I don't think it's fair for us to burden. And Tom, I don't know. Darren, did you get, did you forward that on to?
About the income tax?
Yes.
No.
Yeah, so if you look in there at 34901L1...
Is this an ORC codified ordinance?
No, this is ORC.
Okay, sorry.
And that's in the definition sections of the NCA.
34901?
Yeah, 34901.
I'm in 03, okay.
That, as I read it, I'm no lawyer, but as I read it, that leads me to believe that an NCA could do an income tax.
Yeah, I think they can. I'll read this section, but my understanding, just from their governmental entity, well, let me look.
Because they're, they're...
Let me look, just to be safe. I don't want to be on top of the...
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to look, research that, George. I would, it would seem like, seem highly unusual.
Did you get this email?
What?
No.
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 I just, I was just, my conversation... Something he had mentioned to me on the phone, when I spoke to him this morning. Something about an income tax, and I didn't get a chance to run it down, but...
I think we're getting a little off here. You know, I understand some of the arguments...
Wait, wait, wait. Time and address for the record.
Mike Shade, 3 Law, Delaware, Ohio.
Thank you.
This is, the owners, developers, have every right under state law to be a community authority. At this stage of the game, no matter how this thing works out, the risk is all on the developer. The developer has to do certain things to make their product competitive. They have tried to do that because other developers in the area are doing it too. Now, they haven't chose to use the new community authority because they can demand higher prices. In Old Tangy School, average lot is, you know, anywhere from 105 to 120,000 dollars. In the city of Delaware, lots haven't traditionally bought that kind of product. So, in order to get this done, in order to afford those monies, to make those improvements, of which we talked about the last time, 1.6 million is a rotary. That, does it impact this? Yes. But it's going to be on, it's going to be on a town road. The one gentleman that has spoken, is in white, we're going to do this road, we're going to do these things. We didn't, we didn't write the laws. The laws were written by government, and we cannot bring in both sides of the road. So, that's why the road was never bought into the city of Delaware. Because the owners on the other side would have to acquiesce, acquiesce to it. They chose not to. They did not, if you go back, most of you weren't here, and if you go back to 2001, 2003, in that time range, we were, we were, you know, we wanted to do those kinds of things. And we added on there a $1,000 charge off, off the road for roads. And there are complications in this particular matter that, that I don't think we're, we're losing sight of the, of the trees when we're looking at the entire forest. And in this particular case, well, you ran the numbers and you say you got 19 million. But most of that is debt service. Most of that is debt service that the developer doesn't get. It was in pay the bonds. And absolutely, you can, one of the options is to use income tax. You don't have to. Some communities like that, some communities don't. Most of them in Central Iowa have all been on property tax. And, and, but the risk, the risk that's being taken here is all on the back of the developer. Not on the city of Delaware. If it goes badly out, what's the cities? They zone it. If they have to come back in and rezone it for something else. And you talk about the $350,000 houses. There are different types of houses in this development. There are condos, there are what we call empty nester housing, and there are single-family houses. All those have different price points, and they're going to, it's necessary to add that to make this an overall community. Not everybody, not everybody wants, you know, wants to be, you know, live in a single-family home anymore. They want something smaller, or they want to be a part of a condominium community. Developers trying to, to make that happen. And this project, you know, if, if, all these answers were so easy, how comes, and with two downtits, I'll readily admit that, with two major downtits after 9 and 9/11, and again, in 2008, things changed. But also, the developers suffering greatly because of the cost. You know, Bill and I talked about it just before the last meeting, the cost of asphalt. The tree lawn trees that you want in a development. You know, used to be 75 bucks, now 850. All that stuff adds up, sidewalks add up, all that stuff gets piled on. And when we look at the overall community, yeah, there's good things to come of that. But you've got to have the ability to get that money. And for developers to come up, just to get this project off the ground, $4 million in the ground right now. The thing that the township trustee talked about, well, did they pay that? Did they pay that? No. The developer paid for that, to run that sewer line out there. Paid for the, run the water line out there. And, you know, that goes back to some of the other things that, you know, you want to talk about the history down there, about what was raised in the last pattern, I'll be happy to, I'm not so dying with you. But this, this is important. This is important. And you're going to see more of this. I don't think you're going to see less of this. You're going to see more because the pressure and economics aren't working. We want quality housing. Every council that I can recall has talked about wanting quality housing so that people don't have to go out, our chief executives out in our industrial park. I can remember going out and sitting down with them about it. Well, you know, I don't want to burn this conversation, but let me tell you, they were brutally off, brutally off. So, I think that, you know, before, before we go down that pathway, let's, let's get these numbers back to you. And the numbers are changing as we're getting firmer data. You know, the 1.6, you say, where'd you come up with 1.6? They did their calculations. Guess what? The two that are being constructed and built at Piatt and the Piatt Road Extension, right in line with them same cost. These are people that know what they're doing. They know the business. You don't become successful as Romanelli does, Vincent Romanelli, or Marty Safco, or other developers, either Metro or whomever, without understanding the business, understanding the cost of doing what you have to do to sell a product.
Mr. Shade?
Yes.
I'm going to take Tom's scenario. 100 houses built, 2008 happens again. Nothing else is built for a long time. Do, at some point, do the developers have to supplement the bond payments? Or what, what happened? You know, if we have 100 houses supporting that NCA?
If you have borrowed the money, all the money upfront to get it done, and there's not enough money to pay it, yes, they will. Who is, who's going to pay it? If you have 100 houses...
That's what I wondered.
100 houses aren't going to pay that, no. But it's the same thing. It's the same thing that you've done with the, with the two NCA's that the city has, has moved on. Over to Glen Road Parkway. Those aren't, those are things internal to the development. That was all money used for it. And that's what, that's what these people are trying to get back. This is a totally private development unit. This isn't, these aren't big projects like Glen Road Parkway. I'm not grudging that we did Glen Road Parkway, or that we did NCA's to get it done. We just have to use good common sense in this approach. And, and we have to be willing to be flexible on both sides. And that's why we've been taking a look at these numbers so hard. We hear what you're saying. Sometimes we're not sure you're hearing back. And I can tell you this, when you're looking now, when you're looking now, at $165 a square to build a home, and when, when, when I first started, when I first started, that included kitchen appliances. Well, guess what? You may get a, you may get a, an allowance for it, but it doesn't even come close to covering your costs. So, that's an add-on for every, for most of the example. So, everything is changing. Pressures are there. And we just need to, you know, let's see, let's get back with you on the numbers and have, have a further discussion. I, you know, I was out of town last week, so I don't know where the numbers stand. I communicated with Dave Fisher on these two occasions, and he said where one of the principals was unavailable, and, and they hadn't had an opportunity to go through and run those numbers by him.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I don't think so. I think we'll wait on those numbers and try to come up with...
Yeah, see, unless I'm mistaken, I think there was, last time there was a teleconsensus, we wanted to move ahead. We just wanted to get the details of what we're comfortable with. So, if that hasn't changed, then I think that's what we do unless...
That was, I thought, the way we left it.
Right. I'm comfortable with the higher number.
So, once we got their numbers back in terms of...
What higher number?
Probably seven and a half.
Seven and a half?
Well, so seven and a half mills on $350,000, 918.75 a year. Over 20 years brings in $18,365 on a $350,000 home. That is, what, just about 6%? Right? 6% of that purchase price is what they're trying to recoup over 20 years? Why don't they just price their products 6% higher? If you're, if you really have a quality unit, 350,000 to three, if I can afford a $350,000 house, I'm not going to bulk at $18,000. I'm not going to bulk at 6%. Most people are well within a 10% when they're buying. And if you're pressed to buy a $350,000 house because you don't have that luxury going either way, maybe you should be reconsidering your personal finances and looking at what's, you're better able to afford. Again, I don't, I understand. I fully understand, Mr. Shade, that the developer wants to make money. And I don't care if he makes money. I mean, he should make money. He's in the business to make money. But he shouldn't make money this way. Needs to build that cost into his product and sell that product at a full market price. This is basically a way to hide costs to the consumer. That's how I feel.
I have a question.
Yes.
If I may. So, if I'm building a brand-new house in this development, is there a way to know at that closing, this is what my income tax will be? Because I recall when, I thought that taxes aren't assessed that way until...
They're paying on land only for the first year and a half to two years.
So, how would they be able to know at that closing?
If I was doing the closing, I would know about it, but that's just me. Most of these developers have their own title companies. It'd be up to them to talk about it at the sales, at the time they buy the house, and it would be up to that title company to express to them then. But that title company is going to have to know about it. I know about it because I'm sitting on council.
Well, and just to clarify, Councilman Keller, you meant the charge, not the income tax, when you were asked to know what they were? You said, would they know what the...
Did I say income tax?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to. I'm sorry.
Just want to make sure.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't know why I said income tax. You know, thank you.
Well, I think they have to disclose the charge. I think Councilman Keller's question was, would you know what the number would be without knowing what the house is valued at yet? Is that the correct pre-statement of your question?
Right, because it doesn't seem like you would be able to accurately know that at closing.
Everyone will know there is a charge, it's this many mills, but they won't know what that mills is based on until it's evaluated by the auditor and then...
And this is why we get the phone calls a year later, because people say, what in the world is this?
I did a closing last week for Chase, and it was a brand-new build. I told the person, find another house in your neighborhood of comparable size, and you'll have an estimate. I can't tell you what that fee is going to be for a year and a half to two years, what your taxes are going to be.
There has to be a reasonable calculation done. The fee has to be disclosed in a reasonable calculation of what that fee would be in the contract. It has to be in the contract that's set forth in 349. It has to be disclosed. And whether that was disclosed, because one of the problems was, one of the problems was, with the, with the NCA charge that went in on Glen Parkway, was is that, that was, it was over a large area, and it may have gotten lost and shuffled by, by those developers because they weren't the driving force of that NCA. But if you're the driving force of that NCA, you have to make all those disclosures. And it's, you know, $350,000, we'd probably call up to the auditor's office and say, hey, could you, can you run a calculation? This is that, this is what it would be? And I'll tell you, based on current information, will that change? Yeah, it could change. You could have another senior citizens levy, you could have any number of levies that go on school levies, things like that. They're going to change that number. But it's all disclosed. It has to be by law.
So, then I guess my question would be, if someone isn't willing to pay the extra $18,000 on the house at the point of sale, why on earth would they be willing to pay that extra charge for however many years moving forward? I mean, it just seems like people are paying either way, so why do we need to put it in this NCA? If they're going to know about it?
Well, the, the, like many things, when you go out and buy a home, you go out and buy a home. You have a reasonable idea of what you can afford. If you can allocate that cost over a long, long period of time, like you were talking about tonight, with, with, if you brought in another community down on Pollock Road, and you did it over a 20-year period, you allocated that cost, it makes it lower. And, you know, an additional $20,000 upfront can start with some people. If, if you, you know, I'm not saying it would do that with everybody, but, you know, it's a, it's a mechanism. Why in the world, why in the world would the state legislature undertake having an NCA if they didn't see it as a useful tool in the development process? It gives them other options to fund these major improvements. Streets in this particular subdivision. You've got an unloaded road through the middle of this, all the way through from Pollock to Berlins Station. Not, we're not talking about the rotary. We're, we're talking about through the middle of this project, not one driveway back to that road. And that's total cost to the developer. Total cost. And that, that certainly gets added into the price. But, you know, we've had this discussion, and we continue. And I've had the discussion with Tom on many occasions. The dynamics are changing. The cost, the cost is driving everything. And fortunately, fortunately, I think here in Central Iowa, I think through a lot of hard work and dedication by a very good building industry, we've kept costs fairly contained. You go into other communities and, boy, it's just unbelievable what some of these people do. And so, we just have to look at this stuff... And so we, we just have to look at this stuff, look at the, look at what's being asked to be recovered, covered by this. The, 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 the idea of having an NCA has already been decided. The state has already spoken on that issue. You can have an NCA. Now, whether this community wants to do it, how can you not do it? When you've already done it twice? It isn't because you're going to build Glen Road Parkway, it was because that was a way of funding it that you could do. Pal did it, Pal did it by, by on Saw Mill Parkway. Once that door's been opened, you know, you can't do it. The, the idea is, okay, if you can't recover these costs, if you can't make this number work, what are you saying? You're going to have an empty hole sitting down there on, on, on Pollock where, where, you know, the developer, the developer might even say, hey, wait, we got preservation parks right next to us. Let's just make the donation. Let's just make the donation. We got to write off everything. Now, how's that benefiting the community? Surely, they didn't get any, they didn't make profit off of it. But, you know, there's risk here. Very meaningful risk for developers. It's always been there. And they're always willing to take the chance. But if you don't have realization that you can recover and you can make profit off of it, you're not going to do it. Nobody's going to. In our own businesses, in our own life, we're not going to do it if we can't turn it around.
Okay, so we'll wait for the numbers, and we'll continue this discussion. Moving on, let's go on to item 11, which is the third reading of ordinance number 18-88.
Ordinance, ordinance number 18-88, an ordinance amending section 549.08 of the City of Delaware's codified ordinances relating to pointing and discharging firearms.
This ordinance is in regards to the annexation of the Boy Scout camp, and it's ready to be adopted by city council this evening.
Is there any further discussion?
Move for approval of ordinance 18-88.
Second.
I'm motioning Mrs. Keller, second Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Motion, yours.
Item 12, fourth reading of ordinance number 18-80. Elena Field, please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 18-80, an ordinance accepting the annexation of 221.341 plus or minus acres of land, more or less. Description and map are attached here to its exhibits A and B for the annexation known as the Central Ohio Boy Scouts of America Camp Lazar's annexation by Michael R. Shade, agent for the petitioners.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, this is the last step in the annexation process that was started in June for this. It's the final acceptance, and this is essentially annex, and they, the camp for city utilities, to acquire city utilities. Following this, there will be a rezoning and conditional use and preliminary development plan that was approved by planning commission last week, and this will be in front of you in November 12th.
So this ordinance is ready to be adopted this evening. We'd recommend your approval.
Any questions? Any motions?
Move for approval of 1880.
Second.
I'm motioning Mrs. Keller, second Mr. Rohr. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Motion, yours.
Before we begin the next one, we're going to take a five-minute break.
I don't see enough for that. You'll need to download.
I was trying to look at the time. Okay, we're taking a five-minute break.
We had some comments.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty-six.
That was good.
What?
We'll call this meeting back to order. If you will read items 13, 14, and 15.
Ordinance number 18-73, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of rezoning amendment for the High Point Place Apartments, 160 units on approximately 16.70 acres from R6 multifamily residential district to R6 PMU multifamily residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Bowtown Road just west of Village Gate Apartments. Ordinance number 18-74, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU planned-mixed-use overlay district to be established for the High Point Place Apartments, 160 units on approximately 16.70 acres, and located on the north side of Bowtown Road just west of Village Gate Apartments. An ordinance number 18-75, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan for the High Point Place Apartments, 160 units on approximately 16.70 acres owned to R6 PMU multifamily residential with a planned-mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Bowtown Road just west of Village Gate Apartments.
Sam?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, so I'll give you some history on this. The planning commission denied this 4/3 on August 1st of this year. Therefore, a supermajority of council would be required to approve this, that'd be five members of council. This is the, uh, plan exhibit, just letting you know, right is to the left, or north is to the left, sorry, just to the left. So I didn't know if you wanted me to go in more detail, or, you know, the.
We've heard it before, do you want to hear it again? Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good to see you all again. Steve Duckler, 84 North Sandusky Street. Joe, go get in the record in case you're going to look at Charlie here real quick. Joe Thomas, Metro Development, 470 Old Blue and Red, West of Allmount.
And Mark Furlong, and then Maggie Mender, the owner of the property, and the group
Thank you. We've, uh, just to reiterate, uh, to recap, uh, since our last meeting, uh, meeting with Mr. Holland, which we can discuss here in a second. Again, just to reiterate, the public support from the business community for this, Jezz Brown, Trevor Bay, Jack's Performance, from the Nursery, Delaware Area Chamber of Commerce, Jeff Cover, from Cover Really, uh, great Mike Shade, uh, he's at the bottom now. Yeah, you're good. Former Delaware City Mayor, uh, former recent Ohio Wesleyan grad, Sajid Malik, also a football manager of Wesleyan, talking about the need for housing, uh, for recent Wesleyan grad. Obviously, we talked about the warmth seat, Columbus 2020 study that talked about the need for, uh, this type of housing. Obviously, employers are supporting this for a number of reasons. Limited housing options for employees. Most of their employees are commuting from Columbus, Carneyville, and Merritt. Need housing options here in the city. Obviously, we've talked about the increased income tax base for the city, increased tax base for the city schools. Uh, one other point that we talked about with Mr. Holland, uh, the recent meeting, was, uh, the opportunity to do a, a non-school tip, a non-school tip on High Point, uh, based on our calculations, would project about 1.8 million, uh, which could be used by the city, uh, with dedicate to the city for the purposes of point improvements or whatever else you wanted to do. Um, you know, you're 6.1 million short on, on, on the point, so this is a nice, uh, contribution to that cause. Again, 1.8 million over, uh, within 30 years, 10% non-school tip. Other financial benefits to the city, um, sanitary charge is 646,000, water tap fee is 678,000, impact fee for police fire, park, 170,000. Other municipal fees, 36,000. Ferguson Drive, which is a huge, uh, cost of 615,000. Um, again, I think, uh, Ferguson Drive was not, um, being required, I think we could probably play along, play around and reduce the density, uh, but we're required to put in such, um, infrastructure that much, these economics don't work, um, on our end, to reduce density, and at the same time build Ferguson Drive, which, you know, we've all discussed, we don't know when that'll ever connect anything, but nonetheless, still being required to do that. So if that wasn't a requirement, I think we could probably work with the city on density, along with working with the city on doing a tip, which could generate regular money towards the point which you are obviously short. But if I did money, but this would get you in the right way, I'd have to get it there. And I would like Mr. Furlong, as the property owner, if you have anything to comment.
I've got a lot of things to comment. My name is Mark Furlong. This trap of land actually is my last piece of ground that I've been involved with up here in Delaware since, uh, 1995. We started with Kensington Village, uh, and then, um, purchased, we were working with the owners, uh, more than, Chalk and Stone, uh, the Crowder Distribution Center was part of what we did. We worked with the Davidsons and others, and put a collaborative plan together, basically all the road system you see out there right now, how it's laid out, highlighted out, uh, who to get this whole thing done. When we went down Bowtown Road, uh, like I said, we started with Kensington, um, laid out, you know, subdivision, laid out apartment complex, uh, we actually, uh, did develop one of the nicest apartment communities in the city. And, you know, I've been, I've been looking for another quality development. When I rezoned this ground, um, we got the R6 zoning. When I rezoned the ground, the R6 zoning was 10 years per acre at the time. So if you look at, uh, Village Gate, their development is 10 years to an acre on R6 zoning. The city benching would be the plan to what it is now, which is eight years, traditionally is 10, if you wanted to have some community buildings and so on. So I'm just requesting that, uh, you improve the plan, um, and they have submitted it. I think it works, I think it's a quality development. It kind of leaves me a little bit, I mean, I have a development plan that actually approved, uh, by my partner, that in 2002, because of some, uh, economic issues, and then retired in 2008, and, uh, now in a nursing home with Alzheimer's, uh, nothing happened. And so I've been looking for the quality development. We've had several come, two tiny apartments, and we've talked, taken out, if anybody's gotten a star, because they all walked away because of the requirements you have for the, um, extra use, it cost an extra move. And so this is the first year that I've been willing to come forward and say, look, I think we can do a quality job, um, if we can clean, if we have to do, have to do. So I guess really the biggest thing on this request to me is you're telling me really what kind of product you want there. If it's turned down and then they decide they don't want to move forward with it, then I've got to find somebody else. And if I find somebody else, um, then I'm more likely going to need to just say, look, I need to find somebody that's not willing to go this route, and just go with the straight R6 zoning, because we have to move centers to it. So anything was for you at all, this type of thing, and just for the, you know, project. I don't want to do that. I mean, I had an opportunity to sell this long time ago for, um, a normal complex, a project, and we weren't willing to do it. That's why I've been doing it pieces, and sold it piece by piece. And so again, this is my, my last piece, I'd like to, uh, build. And so, again, this is my, my last piece, I'd like to be able to see it completed. I think that we brought quality developers to all the other tracks of land in the area that we want to work with. One other thing, as you mentioned, you mentioned the impact fees. I've noticed that they are paying the impact fee for, including the park land set aside, or whatever you are calling it now. Actually, that fee has already been paid by us when we developed Kensington. When we developed Kensington, we took, at the time, the park requirements basically were each track had to set aside their own park land and so forth, for that particular development. And we were able to get the city to agree that we would put all the tracks that we had and do one large park area, recreation area. That's what hit happened with Kensington, and the requirement was to fulfill the requirements of this track, building of apartments in all the other properties along Bowtown Road. So, if you're asking, we'd really like to get a little bit more out of them, you know, we've already given that much more than they're apparently going to be. Although, in that, I just asked it to approve this project and hopefully allow it to go forward.
So, we just, we did include an update that was provided by Mr. Thomas and his staff regarding the cost of, it was a question about the cost of Ferguson Drive, just built as a driveway versus a roadway, and that's included in your packet. That was what was alluded to in Mr. Cuckler's comments. But really, this is a, this is front, council's got a, obviously, this is your, your call in terms of how you want to proceed with this one.
And this is, this was voted negative.
A supermajority.
Yes, a supermajority for this. Sorry.
Thoughts, comments?
Just a couple of things. It's come up several times about traffic in the point, and I just got some information to build. Assuming that every one of these units had a car drive to the point twice a day, that's three hundred and twenty cars. We average twenty-six thousand to twenty-eight thousand cars a day through the point, so it kind of negates, yeah, it's three hundred more cars, but in the long run, we definitely have the points. I think that issue isn't as big an issue as to whether or not this development makes sense as proposed. My position is we clearly need multifamily housing. I understand where they're coming from, that they have to have a certain density, really make it profitable. I guess the question is, are we comfortable with that level of density, comfortable left over at the planning commission?
Lisa's got a calculator out. She's figuring out something.
Doing density calculations.
Those are done on a napkin.
I'm counting for those. Sorry. Any other thoughts on this one?
I don't.
Is there any motions?
Well, I'll move for approval, eighteen dash seventy-three.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
No.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
No.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do we still need to do?
Yeah, I think we need to do.
Yeah, you probably need to.
To do fourteen.
You should at least vote on them all.
I'll move for approval, eighteen dash seventy-four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
No.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
No.
I'm approving the word, eighteen seventy-five.
Sir.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
No.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
No.
Votions are denied. If you will go on and read sixteen, seventeen.
Twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if you just want to keep going.
They're all first readings, right? Lance?
Yes, that's correct.
You can come up for air whenever you need to.
Let's go home. Let's go home.
You say sixteen through twenty-five.
They're all first readings.
Sixteen through twenty-five.
Mm-hmm. They're all first reading. All right. Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety-one, an ordinance for Simon Kenton Council Boy Scouts of America for approval of a rezoning amendment for Camp Lazarus from A one to A one PMU, encompassing approximately two hundred and thirty-one acres and located at forty-four twenty-two Columbus Pike. Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety-two, an ordinance for Simon Kenton Council Boy Scouts of America for approval of a conditional use permit for Camp Lazarus to allow the placement of a PMU to be established at forty-four twenty-two Columbus Pike on approximately two hundred and thirty-one acres. Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety-three, ordinance for Simon Kenton Council Boy Scouts of America for approval of a preliminary development plan for Camp Lazarus encompassing approximately two hundred and thirty-one acres, zone A one PMU, and located at forty-four twenty-two Columbus Pike. Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety-four, an ordinance approving a development text amendment to ordinance dash zero eight dash one one three for Stavroff Land Development for Belmont Place Subarea A for a hundred and two single-family lots and five commercial outlots located north of Peachbloom Road and east of Glen Parkway on approximately forty-nine point six acre zone C three, R six, and A one PMU. Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety-five, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for Stavroff Land Development for Belmont Place Subarea A for a hundred and two single-family lots and five commercial outlots located north of Peachbloom Road and east of Glen Parkway on approximately forty-nine point six acre zone C three, R six, and A one PMU. Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety-six, an ordinance approving a preliminary subdivision plot for Stavroff Land Development for Belmont Place Subarea A for a hundred and two single-family lots and five commercial outlots located north of Peachbloom Road and east of Glen Parkway on approximately forty-nine point six acre zone C three, R six, and A one PMU. Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety-seven, an ordinance for Tim Collet Truglio approving a final development plan for River Street Business Park encompassing approximately two point nine four acres, thirteen properties, located at forty-five River Street in Zone B three and R four PMU. Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety-eight, an ordinance for Tim Collet Truglio approving an alley vacation for River Street Business Park encompassing approximately two point nine four acres, thirteen properties, located at forty-five River Street in Zone B three and R four PMU. Ordinance number eighteen dash ninety-nine, an ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the Wesleyan Inn at two thirty-five West William Street on approximately zero point seven two acre zone POI. An ordinance number eighteen dash one hundred, an ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of preliminary development plan for the Wesleyan Inn at two thirty-five West William Street on approximately zero point seven two acre zone POI.
Thank you. Item twenty-six is consideration of ordinance number eighteen dash one oh one.
Ordinance number eighteen dash one oh one, an ordinance supplementing the two thousand and eighteen appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for a lawsuit settlement and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, property, health, safety, welfare of the city. The emergency clause is necessary in order to expeditiously settle the aforementioned case, and as such, this ordinance will be in full force immediately upon its passage.
Mrs. Walker?
I can do it in line. Madam Mayor, members of council.
She can do her stuff.
Oh, she looked like she didn't want to. You can have a chance.
She was laughing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The ordinance that you have before you tonight is a supplement, to supplement our risk management line item budget. We have, we've decided that it's, with our council's advice, it's in the best interest of the city to go ahead and settle pending litigation in, in hopes to preserve some of our premium rates for the next coming years. And we'd like that to be declared an emergency, if we could, please.
It is, right?
Darren, did I have, is there anything else?
No, you're great. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but.
Make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance eighteen dash one oh one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Make a motion for the adoption of the emergency clause for eighteen one oh one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Make a motion for approval of ordinance number eighteen dash one oh one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion, James. And item twenty-seven is consideration of ordinance number eighteen dash one oh two. May I, if you'll please, read this in the record?
Ordinance number eighteen dash one oh two, an ordinance supplementing the two thousand and eighteen appropriations ordinance to establish funding for the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of US twenty-three and Glen Parkway, Peachbloom Road, and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, yeah.
Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason to provide for the timely start of the traffic signal safety improvement, and as such, will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. It's the first reading. You want to say anything?
I can give you just a quick background and know why it's going to go to additional readings. This just really involves this proposed signal down at Glen Road and US twenty-three. That signal was originally included as part of the design, or parts of it, part of the design when we, when we reworked Glen Road and Peachbloom at twenty-three several years back with the Arrow Project. The signal wasn't warranted at the time, so it could not be completed. Since then, we've been working with TACC, with their campus consolidation to the south. There's a lot of concern now, and warrant the signal with all the students down there, that the signal is warranted now. We were involved in the project originally, even though that intersection's entirely outside the city, is the end of Glen Road at twenty-three, so there is some obligation, plus there was some original obligation on the city's part two, oh, to put that signal on. So, what we're working on is a multi-jurisdictional agreement, where we're having, we're having ODOT work on it, county making contribution, city making contribution, and DACC, all partnering in this project in order to make sure that signal can get put in next year, when this, when the new school opens and the full traffic burden is felt at that intersection. Why we're waiting is because we are currently out for bids now, and we're estimating a two hundred thousand dollar project. ODOT is making contributions in terms of providing all the plan, design services at no cost, plus some actual parts for the project and controller. The county will be contributing fifty thousand dollars, and the remaining hundred and fifty estimated will be split between the city and DACC. Depending upon what the bids come in, that, those numbers might be slightly lower or could be slightly higher, but we'll, we'll bring back a more accurate number once those bids do open, and so this language in here may change slightly. So, that's the background of what this will be about.
And we do have a commitment from the Delaware Area Career Center Board for their participation in the funding of this project up to a hundred thousand dollars, which we think is adequate. But this is a first reading, and look forward to, to taking it to a second reading, getting adopted in two weeks, two meetings.
Thank you, Bill. Item thirty is consideration of resolution eighteen dash fifty-eight.
Resolution number eighteen dash fifty-eight, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and enter into an intergovernment agreement with the Delaware County Commissioners for Indigent Defense Services for Municipal Code violations.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we pass this every year. We used to just continually renew it, but the state has required that we have an affirmative act by council to pass it, but it doesn't impact any of our budget, because we don't charge people under city offenses where they could be eligible for a public defender. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I'll move.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
I'm staying.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
City managers report.
You forgot thirty-one.
I did? Oh, I'm sorry. Consideration of our ordinance, or resolution eighteen dash fifty-nine.
Resolution number eighteen dash fifty-nine, a resolution in opposition to state issue one in the November two thousand and eighteen general election.
This was requested by council that you consider this matter. This is issue, a state issue that's before the voters, and there's been a lot of discussion on it, and a lot of local opposition from judges and others. We think it bears on the city in as much as it would, we think, place an undue burden on our municipal court. Moreover, in our feeling, it's not the appropriate way to address a pub, a public policy issue through the constitution, but ultimately, this is your call.
Have you all had several phone calls from Sheriff Department and talking to you about it?
I haven't received any calls. I personally am, plan to vote against the issue, but as a councilperson, I would prefer to allow my constituents to make up their own minds about how to vote on issues.
Agreed. I also agree. I only agree with that as well, but this is a, a major drug policy issue that not only affect us, but the entire state of Ohio. It's going to literally give us the weakest drug laws in the state. It puts law into the constitution as opposed to having a possibility of legislature where they have time for interested parties to weigh in on it, where it gives us the ability to amend that law, and when that becomes necessary. I'm all for the kinds of reform that allow us to help addicts get treatment, and we already have those kinds of programs in place. The reading, or the wording in this law goes way beyond that, and I, this is my background, this is where I spent thirty-three years, you know. It takes discretion to put you out of the hands of the judges, and it basically puts us in a position where we have, again, though we can struggle a lot in the states, it, it has a fiscal impact on the city, but more importantly, it's tremendously bad criminal justice move for the state and for the city. And so, I think this is important enough that as the county commissioners and others have done, that we should weigh in on it.
I agree with Mr. Schaefer, and I'm a strong opponent of this for all the reasons he stated, but it's, it's a real impact on the city budget, and I think that our constituents would appreciate that fact, as it would be a hundred and five extra cases. I think I ran the numbers and provided them to the city prosecutor at her request of all the felony four and felony five drug possession cases that would become misdemeanor. They would go straight from common pleas court to municipal court, so that would be actual cases that the city prosecutors would have to prosecute, and that the municipal court would have to handle, the municipal court probation officers would have to supervise those people. So, those are real actual dollars out of the city budget that this issue would, and it provides no funding source, no mandated treatment, and no funding for treatment, and so, it would be just another kind of foisting of state dollars onto the localities with no provision for how to cover it, so to speak.
I don't see this as telling our constituents how to vote. I see it as weighing in on an important public policy issue.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I will move for the approval of the eighteen dash fifty-nine resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item thirty-two is, is the City Manager's report.
Yes. His finance director, I have. Thirty-three is.
Yeah, a different one.
You grabbed the old one.
Way there. I took it. Okay.
Things up. I yield my time to the City Manager.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Give me.
The report through three quarters of 2018 was included in your packet. Pretty decent position revenue-wise. A lot of our major revenues are where we expected them to be. A lot of the development-related charges, reimbursements are all up there pretty high. As you're aware, we're doing a lot of development, continue to do so. Expenditures, I don't know. I'm going to run out of space on the first page there if we keep approving supplementals. But I think we're in pretty decent shape so far through the remainder of the year. Entertain any questions you may have.
See none? See, just report.
A couple of items. The cost of recycling is going to be going up. I will be giving you a fuller report towards the end of the week as part of my bi-weekly report, but.
You're saying a fuller report?
A fuller report at the end of the week. We opened bids last week for the recycling, the processing, and transportation of our recyclables. And I'll have a recommendation, I have a recommendation from Mr. Farina, which we're reviewing now. But the upshot is that the market in recycling has, there's just very, very little demand right now. There's excess supply, and that's causing a distortion in what we're paying. And unless council's interested in, in doing away with recycling, which I don't think we are, there is going to be a cost. But I think this is an opportunity to educate the citizens about what the cost is of, of recycling and the importance of, of doing as much of it we can. And so I'll have that information to you later this week in my bi-weekly report. We have a recommendation regarding the maintenance of the airport hangar. I'll have that in my bi-weekly report as well. That, that process took place two weeks ago. And finally, a, a recognition for our city attorney, Darren Schulman, who was recognized at the International Municipal Lawyers Association Conference last week in Houston as a local government fellow, which recognizes a proficiency in local government law and encourages competency in local government, in the legal field, which Darren is in. So shout out and a, a, congratulations to Darren on that accomplishment. And with that said, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Council comments? Mr. Jones?
Just one, operation of the candle fire lights?
Yeah, going well. I just pulled the report we had, when full actuation last Friday, we had one westbound where it was actuated. Yep, and eastbound, they're working well. They're catching all the pains, delivery trucks, and actuating every time. So it's working very well so far.
Yeah, but there was one Friday that hit.
Well, that was, that was not this.
That was two Fridays.
Two Fridays ago.
Oh, it seemed like last Friday.
They recovered, they were, signs were recovered.
Yeah, there, so it is operational.
Fully operational now.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I have nothing.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Only one thing. The crosswalk on South Sandusky at Hardware Exchange, by Hardware Exchange there, which is also a bike path, a multi-use pad. Is there any plan to put beacons at that, to install beacons there?
It's on our list of, of locations. There's multiple locations. So see, we've identified that as a good spot for RFP crossing. It's, but there's many locations.
Yeah, I mean, I always see a fair amount of pedestrian bicycle traffic. And then this is a question then for the chief. If you had a bicycle, you're riding a bicycle. You're a vehicle, right? So you have to apply vehicle laws. So you can't, legally, you can't ride a bicycle in a crosswalk, can you?
The crosswalk ordinance references a person afoot. So riding a bicycle across a crosswalk does not give you the protections that you're afforded as pedestrian in the crosswalk. You are not considered to be a pedestrian when you're on a bike.
So if, if, just for clarification there, if I was out riding with some friends, we were riding there, and we had the, let's say, the flashing beacons installed there, somebody pressed them, and we, you know, then Peloton decides to go across, they get taken out. They really don't have any recourse, right? If they were to get hit in that crosswalk, because they wouldn't have the right of way?
They would be at fault.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you, sir. That's all I got.
Okay.
I have one question on that. I have noticed on several occasions, if the argument and logic apply, I've noticed a number of people in vehicles, because they're handicapped, they cross there quite regularly, and, you know, they don't, they can't get a foot. They, they, they are, they are, and it's, it's more and more, and I, I'm horrified, I'm really horrified. I, I've noticed people that just seem to be callously disregard the pedestrian traffic moving through there. And, and, you know, I just think it's something to be looked at because, like I said, I've seen at least, at least 10 people in, in some kind of car, a motorized device that helps them go across the street at that.
Now, I'm going to say, I, I would have to research that, but I don't think a mobility device, there may be a carve-out for that because mobility device is designed to operate at walking speeds, whereas a bicycle doesn't. So I, I don't know the answer to that, but that's, that's a possibility.
You're not even allowed to ride a bicycle, except as you would drive a car, correct?
Well, outside of the downtown, you can ride a bicycle on a, on a sidewalk, so.
But you're supposed to ride them downtown on the street as if you're.
Correct. That's downtown. That's the downtown area, but where we're talking about, you can ride them on the sidewalk.
I crossed that a lot.
Okay. Just a reminder, we have a community promotion fund meeting Wednesday, by thirty.
Got a work session two weeks from tonight? Six thirty.
Six thirty? Okay.
Thanks.
That unlook for motion to adjourn? And we are adjourned at nine twenty-two.